Good afternoon and welcome to our viewers on YouTube and Instagram. My name is Siah Denton Watts, Deputy High Commissioner, and it's my pleasure to greet you this evening for Town Hall Meeting. To me recall, following our meeting on Monday, the 3rd of November, the High Commission committed to hosting weekly sessions as appropriate to provide updates on Hurricane Melissa recovery relief efforts in Jamaica. The meeting also serves as a platform to share information on the collaboration within the as well as get valuable feedback. So this gives us, we are honoured to talk about this list of analysts, which would include our High Commissioner, Mrs. Beverly Johnson, Managing Director for JLB Shipping and Logistics, as well as Dr. Andrew Brown, CEO of Card and BME Forum, both are valuable partners in the coordination of items for Jamaica. So obviously, it is recognised that annual P2P Global Jamaica Diaspora platform, as well as Mrs. Elizabeth Mullins Smith, who is also the Diaspora's second lead. In addition to that, we also have joining us members of Parliament from the UK Government, along with other members of their constituents. The support from you all there has been robust and overwhelming. On behalf of the High Commission, we extend our heartfelt appreciation for your contributions, as well as the solidarity that you have given to us as we go in this time of great challenge. As we segue into the programme this evening, we have, we do have a lot to cover. James will go through and provide an, High Commissioner.
Thank you very much, Deputy. Good afternoon, fellow Jamaicans, friends of Jamaica. I thank you for joining us today as we continue to stand together the week of Hurricane Melissa, a storm that has tested our resilience. Spirit. It is with a heavy heart that I share the latest events. Firstly, total deaths from Hurricane Melissa now stands at forty-five, with nine additional deaths currently under investigation. These are not just numbers, these are forty-five families, mothers, fathers, children, neighbours for Hurricane Melissa. The highest number of fatalities occurred in St. Elizabeth, where eighteen lives were lost. West Milan reported fifteen, sixteen deaths. Hanover and Chilani, two each, and one each in St Anne and Portland. As we reflect on those losses, let us pause to honour their memory. We pray that God comfort the families as they grieve ones, while also facing the devastation of a hurricane. Yet even in this time of sorrow, there are signs of hope. More assistance has been provided.
Thank you, High Commissioner.
The severely affected parish in St. Elizabeth, West Milan, and for St. Chilani. Regarding restoration of infrastructure, we are prepared to access to many of the communities that were cut off. I can, I'm pleased to say that only two of the original twenty-seven communities are now marooned. Those communities are Petersville in West Milan, Duket, St James. And I'm told that even though they are marooned, they're still accessible by helicopter and that food supplies weren't as good as yesterday. Working with partners from the Caribbean International Community, more people are receiving the basic set of health care. Field hospitals have been opened, St. Elizabeth, Palma and St. James have been strengthened by overseas healthcare professionals. Jamaica Public Service Company announced that sixty-four percent of customers now have been restored. Get your progress in Kingston, St. Catherine and St. Thomas, where over ninety-five percent of customers are back. Restoration has also advanced in Clarendon, Manchester, Portland, St Miriam, St Anne, including critical facilities like the St. Anthony Hospital and the Parish. Restoration work in St James, well underway. Doors restored to the Saks International Airport, Cornwall Regional Hospital. Hanover and West Milan will have port within two weeks. Chilani, during Palma Town, the hospital and pier is scheduled to be restored this week. JPS has deployed over two hundred additional overseas line workers to port new buckets and pole digging trucks, accelerators. National Water Commission has reported a seventy-one water. So these are, there are also signs that the tourism sector is already rebounding. Several resorts and attractions are reopened. We're also deeply heartened, deeply heartened by the overwhelming support from the Jamaican Diaspora and Friends of Jamaica or World. ATM has indicated that over eighty thousand care packets have been distributed, five hundred thousand is provided, and over a hundred and ninety flight hours to provide over sixty airdrops to communities. Relief efforts are going, but will be impacted by inclement weather and wind, which will affect airdrops. And as I understand it, we are having inclement weather right now in Jamaica, which is scheduled to continue up until Thursday. Donations continue to grow daily, and I must commend the generosity of community organisations, businesses and individuals who have answered the call to support our homeland. Over the eighty tonnes of donated items have already been or are scheduled to be shipped this week to Jamaica. So we are grateful for the support of the drop-off centres and our shipping partners, and we will hear more shortly. I should indicate, I will overall picture donations received to ATM at the accounts on the supportjamaica.gov.jn website now amount to roughly four hundred million dollars, that's Jamaican dollars, and converting US dollars, credit card payments and Jamaican dollar donations. We have over a hundred and seventy donors registered on the website, and I indicate that forty countries worldwide are providing aid, and we have already received aid from thirty-one more information on the shipment of the donations will be provided during the course of this meeting. I should indicate that Prime Minister Dr. Most Honourable Andrew Holmes has announced a forthcoming modification to the official platform for mobilising support. This enhancement will allow donors to interface more directly with the platform and contribute to specific institutions or initiatives. And I will indicate here that those on the website are Food for the Poor, Salvation Army, American Friends of Jamaica, JN Foundation and Jamaica Red Cross. I must respectfully urge everyone to pull the official needs list when donated. Please adhere to the designated drop-off times and treat the staff and volunteers at these centres with the utmost respect. They are working tirelessly under challenging conditions and providing their services on a voluntary basis. While our hearts are anxious to help, must ensure that all support is coordinated under like national power framework. This is how we honour those affected, not only with compassion, but with discipline and dignity. Donating items that are old, expired in poor or dirty condition or just not suitable for the Jamaican infrastructure or planning means that centres, churches and halls that have opened their doors are facing unplanned expenses and time to dispose of unsuitable items. I continue to urge all members of the Diaspora, stay informed and engaged. The official government and Jamaica website, supportjamaica.gov.jn. Now we repeat, supportjamaica.gov.jn remains your trusted source for verified updates and renewed coordination. Let us continue to be our brothers and sisters keepers. Let us continue lift each other up. Let us continue to believe in the strength and future of Jamaica. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, A.C. As we move forward, A.C. had mentioned in his speech concerning the persons who would have been assisting the High Commission for the coordination of items going to Jamaica, and we do have Mrs. Beverly Johnson, who is the Managing Director of JLB Shipping and Logistics, and she will be able to provide us with an update as to what has been happening in the Collycrack as well as in her part of Jamaica. Mrs. Johnson, you do have the floor.
Thank you. All protocols observed. Good evening, Jamaicans, fellow Jamaicans, Jamaicans far in there. As I said, I am Beverly Johnson this evening.
Sorry, Mrs. Johnson, we're not hearing you.
We can, we can hear online here.
Can you hear me now?
Uh, not, I'm not hearing.
I can hear you online.
I think that might be with the High Commission's reception.
Beverly, just give us one second, we're not hearing anything on this end.
Testing.
Yes.
Testing.
I'm in, yes.
Great. Good evening, my fellow Jamaicans, friends of Jamaica. Thank you for having me. As I, as was said, I am Beverly Johnson, the Managing Director of JLB International Group of Companies. We have offices here in the United Kingdom, as well as in Jamaica, Kingston and Montego Bay. I was asked by the High Commission's Office to bring an update as it relates to the movement of goods from the United Kingdom and Europe to Jamaica for the hurricane relief supplies that members in the Diaspora would, would like to send or is sending to Jamaica. So since the hurricane, we have been receiving items for shipping. And whilst we say a big thank you to everyone who has so far contributed and those who are thinking of contributing, we must insist that we get items that are not expired. Used clothing is a no-no. We're saying no to those because we're getting all forms of used clothing, and we don't have the manpower to go through and to search, and the government agencies that was just mentioned by the High Commission, the charitable organisations that are assisting us to getting these consignments through the customs process swiftly, do not accept used clothing. I would say later on, if there's a consideration for us to send used clothing, if they are requested, they could be considered. But what we're getting now is simply persons just going through their closets and decluttering their closets and just sending black bags of things that are not suitable for their brothers or sisters in Jamaica. So I'd like to just invite us to consider that the person who will receive an item that you're sending is a brother or a sister that you probably have never met, but is still a brother or a sister, because we're all Jamaicans. A lot of medications are coming too, which is non-prescription, prescriptive medications are coming in, but please bear in mind that they must have a shelf life at minimum twelve months. And let me just emphasise why this is, and also the food stuff. Because all the agencies on the ground who are facilitating the receival of these goods through the customs process will have to now disseminate and distribute the items, and this is going to take a long process. So if something is, for instance, six months only left for, for shelf life, and then you send it in, and it's going to be expired, let's say January or March of next year, they might not have reached that group of items, and then they'll have to be throwing it out. So that if you're going to your cupboards in your homes to take items, that the shelf life really needs to be a minimum of twelve months. So I'm going to say for prescription, non-prescription items, sorry, minimum twelve months. Food stuff, minimum twelve months. Now, prescription items, medical items that are prescribed are not accepted. So do not send them, we're throwing them out, because that is prescribed to an individual who should not be sharing their medication with anyone else. Even if it's a Tylenol box, I'm throwing it out because it was prescribed. So don't rip the papers off, because we can see that you're removing the prescription labels. That was done by the pharmacy, and then you're sending those items. Please do not send those. You need to send non-prescription over-the-counter drugs if you're considering to do so. The other thing that we're seeing is a lot of baby formula. Now, there is a requirement for permit entry for items such as milk-based product or animal-based product in large quantities. And so if the item is milk-based, do not send it. You can send anything that is non-milk-based, and then that will go through. Not that they can't be sent, but the time to go and get the permits is the issue. So we, we can do it, we can get permits, but then I'd have to take each items, each registration, each barcoding to go away and get permits for those items. So we're encouraging you guys to just take a look carefully at the expiration date of any item you're sending, and so that we can have the customs process. All the agencies that the High Commissioner just mentioned would clear the customs process rather swiftly because the containers would be inspected at their site and not at the customs port. So that's what's good about these agencies, charitable organisations such as Food for the Poor, the Red Cross, on the ground, that they will move the, at the containers, simple inspection, simple documentation process, swift removal from the port, and then the customs officers will be at the location of these agency to examine the content of the declarations. We have to make a declaration for every single shipment that is going into Jamaica on the master bill of lading. That was circulated, so I hope persons are complying who are here, that is in the shipping, shipping of goods, such as freight forwarders and NVO CCs and shipping lines. Shipments. There are three types of shipments we are considering, and it is important that we get this clearly so that we do not continue with the confusion. The first one are the items that you're considering to donate to the Government of Jamaica through the Office of Disaster Preparedness and Emergency Management, and these shipments are usually larger shipments from donor agencies, such as building materials, lighting, and all the necessary rebuilding items that are needed. We must have a pre-approval before the items can be shipped. So once it's pre-approved, once it comes through the custom system, again, it will move from the ports rather swiftly. So do not ship to the Office of Disaster Preparedness and Emergency Management without following the, the instruction of the circulation that the Jamaica Customs has sent out, and the Jamaica High Commission here in the UK has sent out to everyone. If you do not have it, you can request a copy and that will be sent to you. The other set of groupings are those independent charitable organisations in Jamaica. Now, a charitable organisation in Jamaica which is deemed independent must be registered with the Department of Cooperatives and Friendly Societies. So a number of you have your independent charity registration. Yes, you can ship to yourself. Yes, you must have a valid tax compliance certificate and your TRA numbers, and you can send those shipments to yourself. However, because you do not have the preferred status, those consignments will be inspected at the port, and they will do so as swiftly as they can. The other set of consignments that are going into Jamaica are where individuals and family members are sending items to their families and their communities, or, you know, the, 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 the families' communities or local agencies on the ground in their communities, because persons want these shipments to go to specific areas. If you send your shipment with the charitable organisations, they are not going to be giving those items to your families. They're going to be sending that to all of Jamaica who has been impacted, and that is the Office of Disaster Preparedness and all the local charity agents. If you send your shipment to your family members and to your communities and to your churches, those shipments will go specifically to those persons. But the latter, which is the ones you're sending to your family members, churches and stuff, you will have to pay the freight charges. There is going to be a freight charge for those shipments to get to Jamaica. The ones that are being sent to the charities and the Office of Disaster Preparedness, we, the freight forwarders and NVOs here, have been solicited the support so we can send those to Jamaica free of costs. But once you want to send it to an identified person or a community representative, you must pay the freight charges. The Government of Jamaica has been very kind in that they have offered duty-free access on the duties and the GCT for personal items and relief items up to the thirty-first of December, twenty twenty-five, which means you must ship now. Your shipment must be landed in Jamaica on or before the thirty-first of December, twenty twenty-five. If the shipment arrives Jamaica on January the first, twenty twenty-six, unless you're travelling to Jamaica to clear that shipment as your goods have been transported for your use, you will be charged the customs duties. So it is very, very important, those of you who wish to send items which is considered gifts for relief supplies to your family members, those items must get to Jamaica on or before the thirty-first of December, twenty twenty-five for you to get the duty-free concession and the GCT concession that the Jamaica Government has afforded all Jamaicans and members of the Diaspora for relief items coming home. However, I must stress, only the customs duties have been waived. So the ports fees, the wharfage, the stripping, the PDC, the handling, all those charges are still chargeable. So don't expect that when you get to Jamaica, you're going to be cursing off somebody to say, but I was told I don't have to pay any fees. That's not the case. The only fees you're not paying is the customs duties and the GCT. The ports, the port fees and the handling fees and the agency fees, those fees are still to be paid. And if you engage the service of a customs broker because you do not wish to go to the port yourself to clear the shipment, the customs broker will also have a fee. If you've asked for the shipment to move door to door, which is from your door here in the United Kingdom to your door in the parish of destination, there is an inland transport fee which also must be paid. So I wish to stress, the only thing you're getting free is the customs duties and the GCT up to December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. I hope you understand the three tiers of relief that can go in, and if you have any questions, I'll take them afterwards. Thank you. Back to you, High Commissioner.
Thank you very much, Beverly. Thank you so much, and I would encourage persons to place their questions in the chat. The chat?
Yes.
Yes? We are monitoring the questions, and we will answer them if not at the end of this meeting, certainly. I'd like to call upon, no, Andrew Brown.
Good. Yes, good evening, High Commissioner. Good evening, family and friends. Just first and foremost, that was a lot. Thank you, Beverly. I think we will need to have some kind of information sent to people and so that we can put onto our websites, and we can share with our family and friends. That was a lot of information to take in, and just kind of knowing how long it takes for shipments to go back and forth. If we were gonna beat that kind of, that deadline, things will literally need to be shipped this week or next week from the UK. So it's something that we really need to kind of emphasise to our UK family who's trying, who are trying their best. And I will now hopefully go through what we are doing in Croydon. So my name's Dr. Andrew Brown. I am the Chief exec of an organisation in Croydon, who's been based in Croydon for the last twenty-one years. We have been called upon to help the disaster recovery that's happened in Jamaica. On the Wednesday morning, I woke up and I met with a couple of my colleagues right away, and also had a telephone call from the High Commission Office to say what and also had a telephone call from the High Commission Office to say what can we do as an organization that can, um, help with the, with the recovery. So some of the things that we've done in the first fifteen days of, of the, of the relief efforts and I'm gonna start with, and I must say, because I, I cannot say thank you to the volunteers. Without the volunteers, we will not have been able to do what we have done within fifteen days. And I'm talking about people who have taken weeks off, people who have donated their video time to, to video us, to, to cook, to clean, all of those stuff that I am saying literally, thank you so, so much to each and every one of you. So from Croydon, this is what we've done from the Croydon BME Forum. So far, we have created four hundred boxes of essential goods. What we've done is we've created care packages for babies, boys and girls, and for families. Four hundred boxes have been wrapped up and now sent down to Kingsley Shipping Center. We've managed to pack twenty barrels of food, medical supplies and tools. That's also now on its way to Jamaica. And we've been able to buy two large crates and we have filled them with food, tools and medical supplies. Now, when I say medical sup, uh, supplies, Beverly, it is, um, ibuprofen and it is, um, paracetamols as well. So let me just clarify that as well. Um, as I mentioned about our volunteers, we, in the last fifteen days, we have signed up four hundred volunteers who have asked to help out with the recovery just within our own organization. When we've started to work out how long and how many hours they've been with us, so far from the thirty-first of October to the eleventh of November, we've done, they've done four thousand hours of volunteering time so far. That's an estimated value of around sixty thousand pounds so far. Financial donations, so we have started to do some fundraising and the very first fundraising, um, was a concept that we ran with, um, NTA Tootin'. That particular concept raised nineteen thousand pounds. That concept was only, um, was only thought of two days before. And to raise nineteen thousand pounds in four hours, um, just showed the love that we have for our Jamaican community. So far as an organization, we've also raised, uh, additional ten thousand pounds on top. One of the things that we've done, and I actually, once again, I never knew about Amazon Wish List. I never knew about Amazon Wish List for fifteen days ago. But Amazon Wish List, if you guys don't know, is you can create a wishlist and then you can ask people to buy um, items for you and they will get delivered either to your house or to your, your place that you desire. So we've had people from Newcastle, Ipswich and Romford reaching out saying they want to donate, but there's no one, um, in their area doing donations. So that's why we created the Amazon Wish List and that's where we put the, um, items of, um, that is on the list on the Amazon Wish List. So far, we've, um, um, people have bought a thousand pounds worth of equipment and those equipment is stuff such as tools, talpaulins, nails, all of those things that is going to, um, help Jamaica rebuild again. Some of the things that we're planning to do over the next three or four weeks is, um, a comedy fundraiser. So a local comedian and local person have reached out to us saying they've booked a hall in Deptford and that's on, um, December the eighteenth. Um, and, um, that's where they're gonna be doing a comedy fundraiser. All of the schools in Croydon will be doing a Wear Your Own Clothes Day or a Mufti Day on Friday, the twenty-first of November. Each of those children will be bringing in one pound to wear the colors of our Jamaican flag. If we get our totals right and everyone brings in that one pound, that's five thousand pounds that we should be able to raise for our Jamaican people. Our Croydon Council themselves, they've also caught the bug and they have now started a three-week staff donation drive. And that's actually started today where they've actually asked one and a half thousand people within their building to start bringing in food and donations, et cetera, et cetera. So you can imagine how much donations that we will receive after that. What we've also done is just done a little mind map on in the last fifteen days who we have, um, connected with. And this is just, once again, just shows that when there is a disaster or when something is, um, when people feel connected to a cause, how much, um, and how quickly we can mobilize. So I've just quickly done a mind map here of who we've connected to within the last fifteen days. So Kingsley Shipping Services in Croydon. Always heard about him, but never, never met him. In the last fifteen days, I think we've spent the last fifteen days together in the morning and in the evening, just talking about it. Lucian Council, Croydon Council, Unison, faith groups, volunteers, radio station Vibes FM, Galaxy FM, our local MPs have reached out to us. Um, the John Whitfield Foundation, um, Norbury Manor High School, the Coconut Industry Board have reached out to us. Nestle have reached out to us. And of course, the Sunshine Girls have also reached out to us. They're coming over to the UK. They've heard about what we're doing in Croydon and they've asked, can we, can we work together? Can we host them? So that's just some of the stuff that we are doing in Croydon. Last and not least is some of the things that we want to do, um, over the next couple of weeks is, um, raising funds for a forty-foot container. But after hearing what Ms. Beverly said, I might have to have a conversation with her about that and, and what the charges will be. But we want to try to raise a forty-foot container that can, um, host all of the items from Jamaica, from the people in Croydon. And of course, we are also looking to sponsor three people from the BME team to also travel to Jamaica in January to hopefully open the containers and see what, and you know, just to make sure that that three hundred and sixty process is happening. What I cannot stress is people want to donate and people love donating, but everyone wants to know where does the money go into? Where, you know, where's the money going to? Who is it going to reach? What areas is it going to? So what I'm hoping to do, as I said, is if we can fund three people to actually go down to Jamaica and actually see that whole process happening, um, it's something that I'm gonna be speaking to my sponsors about in the next couple of weeks. Whilst I close, I've been told I have to make sure for I plug our Instagram and TikTok, which is, um, at Croydon BME Forum. Um, and that's for our Instagram and TikTok as well. And the last and not least, must thank our awesome volunteers. I cannot stress, High Commissioner, and I'm hoping you're gonna come and see us in Croydon very soon because I would like to invite each and every one of those four hundred people who has now registered with Croydon BME Forum to see you and for you to shake their hand. Um, thank you very much. Any questions, happy to answer.
Thank you very much, Dr. Brown, for your update. And listeners, let me, let me just tell you that you will have updates from other regions in our, other town halls, um, going forward. Um, as to the, and just to address one question raised by Dr. Brown as to where the relief is going, I have reached out to, uh, my parent ministry uh, to have the, the Executive Director of AdPem when he does his, his, his briefings, his post-cabinet briefings, to just simply give some detail as to the actual, um, districts and towns, et cetera, where the, the relief supplies are being, um, distributed to on a, um, on, on a frequent basis. I know that when you send, um, the, the, the relief, the relief supplies, AdPem, as we leave it to AdPem to distribute according to need. So as you can imagine, the concentration has been in St. Elizabeth, West Milan and St. James. That's where the concentration has been. And as I've indicated here, some of that has been, um, sent to, to marooned communities in West Milan and St. James. But, um, in response to that question which we got from our last town hall, we have put out the request so that there can be, um, that public information. In addition to quite frankly, what you can get from now, I should say this, JIS, the Jamaica Information Service, and its social media platforms has been getting that information out as to where the relief is actually going. That is one place you can, you can. So thank you very much, um, Dr. Brown. So I would like to move on to the topic of fundraising. And I'm glad to hear first of all, the initiatives coming from Dr. Brown and the many other initiatives that are taking place across the United Kingdom. I should indicate that our Ministry of Culture, Gender Entertainment and Sport has endorsed a fundraising event or events in, um, the United Kingdom and in other European countries. It is a concert called Isle of Jamaica. Um, one will be tomorrow, tomorrow night, November thirteenth, um, in Camden, in Camden at Coco to Coco, I think is the name of the place. And you are there, um, to, um, support the event. But it is, um, an accredited, um, fundraising event put on by the Ministry of Culture, Gender Entertainment and Sport. Okay. So, friends?
Sure.
Yes, I'm gonna turn over to Deputy.
So with that, we have been fielding questions, um, from our chat as well as from um, pre-questions that were sent on from Instagram. And we have a question here from Carol who has indicated that, um, she wanted to find out whether or not cruise ships to Black River from Kingston could deliver aid and help in the triage and take people out of the disaster zone. Um, and that would be for persons who are vulnerable, such as women, children and other adults as well as elders. So that's one of the questions coming from Carol.
Well firstly, the Executive Director of AdPem is, um, is from the, from the Jamaican um, military. He is Commander, um, oh dear.
Commander Alvingale.
Commander Alvingale, thank you. And he is particularly versed in admiralty and shipping and so on. So the, the, the judgment call as to whether or not it is feasible for those type of ships to assist in the relief effort is up to him. Um, as everybody knows, of course, Jamaica does not have any cruise ships. That would have to be coming from those cruise lines, um, in other jurisdictions to assist in that effort. But I do know that the concentration of relief, first of all, is by, by air and, um, efforts are being made to relocate persons in certain areas.
Um, another question coming from Benjamin Phipps who wants to know, can the customs waiver be extended beyond December thirty-first? And it is too short.
We made the case when, um, uh, when we were asked to consider extending the, the, the duty waiver, we made the case. I think we made it for three months. Uh, but of course, the Minister of Finance does the calculation and so on. And perhaps they're waiting to see how things pan out between now and December and may consider an extension after that time. But, uh, we just made the representation to extend it beyond the end of November and it is now extended to the end of thirty-first of December. Um, I say all of that to say, it is still possible for further representation to be made to extend that period, which we will do.
Thank you, Aitie. From Sheldon Lewis, are there any special measures being put in place for people who have lost their valuables and other, including zinc and roofing in order to help them to rebuild? Are there also in discussion with the Jamaican banks?
First of all, um, there, there is provision now in place for grants of five hundred thousand dollar grant to NHT contributors to help, um, in rebuilding their homes. There is also, um, a loan facility is being extended to them as well for that purpose. Outside of NHT contributors, the government of Jamaica is contemplating, um, some sort of grant or assistance to other homeowners outside of the NHT, NHT network. And that is something that I understand is being considered. Regarding the banks, um, the banks, um, didn't have to be asked, quite frankly. They are contributing as well. One notable bank is National Commercial Bank, which through its foundation is seeking to a donation of four hundred and fifty million Jamaican dollars towards the relief effort.
Question coming from Lorna says that she's concerned about the efforts to reach persons in obscure communities um, in Jamaica. Similar question coming from Annette Levy who also wants to know what's the procedure for distribution of donations to the districts, particularly St. Elizabeth.
The proceed, well, first of all, as, as you can imagine, we're coming, uh, just a few days ago, we were reporting twenty-seven communities that were marooned. Now it's just two. It does show that significant, significant effort has been made to reach those communities. Um, the procedure is really to access the remaining two by air. That is the procedure, the details of which is being worked out by AdPem who is heavily assisted by the Jamaica Defense Force as well as the private sector that is providing logistics through warehousing and trucking.
I see your question, Stephanie P, who wants to know why can't the High Commission ask the British to send planes to fly donations to Jamaica?
I can't.
The British government to send planes to fly donations to Jamaica.
The British have already, well, yes, the planes, it was a plane. The British has already sent planes with donations to Jamaica.
Um, Karina MacArthur wants to know when data communication will be restored such as, um, flow and DigiCell. Our community needs these services to contact emergency responders and families over here.
Alright, so in relation to that, this, this flow, beginning with flow, as of November tenth, eighty-seven percent of the, um, hurricane-affected persons have been restored. Um, it's, it's reduced until it's, the best is just twenty-six percent, twenty-six percent inclined on, um, twenty-five percent. Twenty-five percent, I beg your pardon. Uh, DigiCell has restored only, well, sorry, has restored seventy-five percent of its network. Um, particular challenges in Hannover, Chilani and Negri. So the, the short answer to the, to the question as to when, the when is a daily thing. It's a continuing process.
Um, Elaine, Elaine Longmore. Um, what can, what help can the Twining community of Lewisham offer to children with disabilities and connected family and friends in Jamaica?
Well, um, I know there will be need for, um, I think the term is psychosocial support. Um, what I would encourage you to do, there is an email that you can access from the website to make a specific proposal. So you can make your specific proposed proposal. Or if you wish, you can send it to us, the Jamaican High Commission, and we can pass it on.
There is also a question or concern expressed about the safety of barrels and goods sent and held in storage for families and friends in shelters.
So customs right now, um, has, in addition to the regular police force, we have the Jamaica Defense Force and the usual customs, um, security force. Um, being part of the effort to secure the relief goods. Uh, don't mind telling you, I have not heard of any issue there. Not heard of any issue as regards the safety of the items received in Jamaica. But we will monitor it from now on.
Herman Irish wants to know what documentation I dare to support with housing damage to rebuild? And he wants to know if this is in US dollars or Jamaican dollars as the grant needs to be enough to allow basic needs, construction or repair to be carried on.
The documentation will depend on the institution that you apply to. And if it's an NHT thing, NHT will tell you what documentation you will need. As regards the other scheme that I mentioned, of course, that scheme is not yet in place. So we cannot yet speak to the documentation that you need in that regard. Please bear in mind that we're dealing with limited resources, the government overall. I'm pretty sure, and the Prime Minister has said it, that you cannot expect, one cannot expect to restore everybody 100% as a result of the most significant hurricane that we have ever experienced. Cannot. Now, the figures that have been given in relation to that are in Jamaican dollars. So, I do not expect down the road that the Jamaican government will be providing relief in US dollars. I don't expect that. But just to say, while we appreciate the suffering and the devastation that has taken place, I don't think it would be reasonable to expect down the road that there will be full restitution offered by way of grant by the Jamaican.
Thank you, Aitzy. We have had a couple of questions coming in from Jackson Nelson with regard to the custom duty waivers, which was already addressed. Similar question coming in from Portia Clark, that was also addressed as well. So, we would move to one from Pauline Stevenson, who wants to find out about volunteering. In terms of that, that's for engagement. What steps are being taken to involve those who wish to go from the UK to Jamaica to help in whatever capacity?
Well, first of all, the way to go about volunteering is through the website, supportjamaica.gov.jn. There is a feature there where you can log in and so on. I should tell you that I understand that we have today 400,000, I believe, sorry, I beg your pardon, 4,000 volunteers have already registered on the site. As to where they will be deployed, that is a matter not yet completely determined because we're dealing with those persons right now that are needed in the immediate relief effort. That is to say, the poll workers from across the globe, where they are needed for JPS, the nurses and so on. So, that is what is being rolled out now. But I am assured particularly from the ambassador, who is spearheading this effort, that shortly, the volunteers who have registered will be contacted as to where they will be needed. In the question, I get the feeling that there is a request for assistance or financial assistance, volunteers going to Jamaica. I do not believe the Jamaican government right now is in the position to do that.
In terms of the finances, finances relief and resources provided, will there be an independent committee outside of the government to oversee them and to allow for transparency and accountability? And if not, why not?
The answer is yes, there will be one. It's going to be, first of all, a joint select committee of Parliament, which is in government, even though it is joint select, meaning both parties, both political parties will participate in that. But in addition to that, there's another overarching council, which Cabinet is now working on, that will be established, which will include non-governmental organizations as representatives and the private sector. But as I understand it, Cabinet is still working on the details as to that oversight body.
Angela Christian wants to know, why is there a backlog of containers?
Why is there a backlog of containers? Well, first of all, I would need to have further detail on that. I suspect because we're getting a lot of relief for a number of different quarters, there would, it's not an immediate clearance from the port. Goods consigned to AdPem are being prioritized, as well as goods to charities are being prioritized. So, there may be some delay right now at the ports. And the expiration for that is the share value, that would be the expiration. But the idea is priorities being given to AdPem and charitable organization. Goods consigned to AdPem and charitable organization.
There is a question coming in from Cassandra, who wants to know, what is the strategy for helping those with mental health and other issues which make them significantly vulnerable?
So, the Prime Minister has spoken to that need. And as I understand it, he's about to announce a program for that, to provide, I think, again, I think, I hope I have the right term, psychosocial support for those traumatized by the hurricane. And quite frankly, it is being rolled out particularly in relation to children. So, I have a strong feeling it is going to be school-based in the first instance. But the Prime Minister is about to make an announcement in that regard.
There is a question coming from Dr. Errod Jarrett, I believe, who says, it is my understanding that many of the hurricane shelters were schools and churches, which prove not to be suitable structures for such an event. What is the government's plan to build hurricane bunkers that will offer the citizens protection?
This was something addressed by the Minister of Local Government as to the feasibility of having purpose-built shelters in Jamaica. That is something that they are investigating, there are issues surrounding it. If you're going to be able to withstand a category five hurricane, you know, a concrete structure underground shelters and so on, as to whether how feasible that is, that is something that they are looking to. But the truth is that the shelters have actually worked fairly well in past hurricanes. And it did save over 2,000 lives in Hurricane Melissa. So, these are temporary, obviously temporary shelters, because the aftermath of hurricane and the need for shelter is temporary up until a particular point. The real thing though, is that as schools are beginning to reopen, which is what is happening now, these temporary shelters are being decommissioned.
Thank you, Aitzy. Just to further expand on the shipping container, I see Mrs. Johnson has elaborated further on it to say that the backlog is a result of ships that were diverted due to the passage of the hurricane. And some of these vessels have arrived and discharged their general cargo in addition to the relief consigning. So, that's an additional reason for the delay that you might have been experiencing in getting your goods cleared. Alright there, let's see, there is Dr. Joe Alfred. Will there be a program publication of progress against the national rebuilding program?
Will there be?
A publication of progress against the national rebuilding program.
In other words, will there be a report on the national building program? Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
How do I, Jean-Paul, how do I make it known that I'd like to offer my services to help? I want to travel to Jamaica.
Supportjamaica.gov.jm. Look for the section in Volunteer, click on it and register.
Doreen is indicating that there's slow progress reaching the vulnerable with aid. And she is worried about that, so.
Well, tell her, well, Doreen, don't worry too much. And I'll give you the phrase that has been used. Steady, determined progress has taken place. The storm hit us about 10 days ago. About 10 days ago, this hurricane hit us. Right after the hurricane, 27 communities were inaccessible. Now it's just two communities in 10 days. And even though those communities were inaccessible, as I understand it, the day after the hurricane, food supplies were being airlifted into those communities. Now, I'm not here saying that everybody has been reached. I can't say that. But there has been significant progress in reaching everybody.
From our YouTube viewers, we have, what support is available? And this is from Lorraine, what support is available for the elderly, over 80 years old, who are retired, not paying NHT and also living up at Trelawney, which hasn't received any support?
No discrimination will be made against the elderly who has been retired. When AdPem goes in with the relief effort, they will not sideline persons who are disabled, who are elderly or whatnot. So too, with those, we're talking about rebuilding their houses and all of that. I suspect the program outside of the NHT program, which have announced, which have indicated will be announced, will not exclude those persons.
This, I believe, from Doreen. Perhaps, what steps are being taken to ensure that everyone receives aid, not just those on main roads or those who know someone?
So, obviously, aid is not being distributed just to people on the main road. Obvious. I mean, it's a pain to say that using helicopters or going into the, AdPem is actually going into the communities to see that aid is being distributed. So, as I've said before, we have reached out to our ministry to have AdPem give regular updates as to how the items are distributed. This is separate and apart from what you can see taking place on JAS social media platforms. So, you know, we have to trust, quite frankly, let us also squatter the chase. We have to trust that AdPem knows what it is doing. Alright, we have the executive director, who's particularly versed in the logistics of seeing to it that relief gets to where it should get. And all indications suggest that the relief is not just being distributed to those who are easily accessible. They're trying to distribute the items to the remote, to the inaccessible, to the needy, to the elderly and to the disabled.
We have another question as it relates to healthcare professionals returning to Jamaica to provide their service. Yes. About healthcare professionals on the desk who wish to return to provide service, how can they be incorporated in the?
Supportjamaica.gov.jm. Go to the website, click on Volunteer. You fill out, I think there's a questionnaire, a short questionnaire, where you fill out your skill set and so on.
To feel that you're interested.
That's right, to feel that you're interested in.
Carol Graham-John, any plans to support schoolchildren who are not able to attend school due to lack of water, no electricity or damage to the schools?
The support to the children will be support to the family, which is being rolled out and has been explained. So, it's the support of the family that is taking place.
Okay. Can we have the details of the distributors? We can share this with those who are in the contact with, for sure. So, Lorraine Jones, we see your question. The distributors can be had from our website, where we have a list of all the drop-off locations here in the UK. So, it's www.jhuk.org and it's on our website. As you scroll down, you'll be able to see the list and choose the one in your area, noting too that there are timelines that are there for you to drop off. So, asking you kindly if you could stick to the timelines that have been indicated on the drop-off list for those shippers who are assisting the recovery.
And if I might add, there's a telephone number for each. So, questions about when you need to deliver your shipment so that it can get to Jamaica by the 31st of December, etc. All those questions, the costing that you will face depending on what you're shipping and who you're shipping it to. You are encouraged to just call and get that information for yourself.
With regard to substantial amount of surface waters that are stagnant, how well is the engineering effort going to remove and contain the rise of possible diseases?
I know that it is being addressed, but I do not have an update as to how well the efforts are right now. So, I don't have an update on that, and we can flag that for our next town hall meeting.
Right, with regard to the health aspect, field hospitals that have been opened.
Oh, they're asking about the field hospitals?
Right, they're asking about containment or the rise of possible diseases.
Right, I understand that. But yes, I know there are efforts, I know they're tackling it, it's being tackled, particularly by the JDF, I believe. But I don't have a report on it to share in this town hall meeting. We can start to flag it for our next.
Just to clarify for the YouTube query that had about, again, shipping barrels and waivers in place, that was addressed earlier. But then you have until the 31st of December this year to go through and do and send your packages, your barrels to Jamaica. And that waiver that you get will be on the import duty as well as the GCT. And that was elaborated earlier on by Mrs. Johnson, who outlined what those steps are. But in fact, if it is that you are shipping and you reach out to the shipper, they will be able to provide you again with that information for you to know the regulations, know what it is that you're shipping and how it is that you will get your packages back to Jamaica. Is there a possibility for styling extension beyond 30th of November?
Oh, okay, flag that, we can ask, we can ask that of the minister. Can ask if that is possible.
I'm feeling no more questions coming in.
Alright.
So, at this point in time, I want to.
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
I'm wondering if we could, I know there are members of Parliament on our Zoom platform. And we have Mr. Nathaniel Pete and Mrs. Elizabeth Mullings on our Zoom link. I don't know if any one of those persons, perhaps I could defer purse to the members of Parliament or Member of Parliament online on our Zoom platform. If there is any specific question or comment? Yes, could you raise your hand, please? Do me a raise hand. No hands raised? Alright, okay. Is he raising his hand?
No, yeah, no raise hand, okay. Okay, so I think that could bring us to the end of the session. But wanted to thank Mrs. Beverly Johnson, as well as Dr. Brown, for their contribution to this session as well, very useful information. And then encouraging all the persons online on the platforms to go through and make your queries or the shipping information that you're going to send into Jamaica. Just to reach out to them for additional information. And we are also here for you to reach out. And we will go through again the information that is on the chat to see how best we can pick up some other questions that we haven't been able to, I'm sorry, you don't feel at this point in time that you want to put in the chat. We will go through and respond and then check our website as well. There is information there as well for you to reach out to us so that we can give additional information and support that you may need going forward. So, at this point, if there are no other questions or anything, just want to thank you again for your viewership, thank you for the questions. And again, thank you for your support to the recovery efforts in Jamaica. Thank you, and I beg your leave. Thank you and a good evening.